I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest School District 67, Board of Education for November 13th, 2018. May I have a roll call, please, Eileen?
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Mr. Novak will not be attending tonight.
Great, thank you. We have a quorum. There is no president's report, so we move directly to the superintendent's report.
So, I wanted to discuss the recent publication of the Every Student Succeeds Act designations from the state. Now, clarify, the ESSA is the successor agreement to No Child Left Behind. Most people in the country and the state are familiar with No Child Left Behind. Couple of things that No Child Left Behind brought to us was the universal testing of all students' grades, three through eight, and required one test in high school. That part of that legislation continues. This reauthorization of No Child Left Behind returned much of the authorities over schooling to the state, but not all of the authority, but a significant amount of it. So, each state had to come up with a plan to comply with the Every Student Succeeds Act. And Illinois' plan included two things. First, designations, so exemplary, commendable, underperforming, and lowest performing. And then also, at the insistence of Governor Rauner, there are letter grades or will-be letter grades unless the new governor decides to move away from them. Letter grades A through F, beginning in 2019. There are two factors that make up the designation. The first is academic, and those are a combination of the park, growth, English learner proficiency. There's a science exam that the state hasn't figured out yet. There is also another 25 percent that are school quality indicators, so attendance, a middle school indicator, a P2 indicator, and whether or not the district did a climate survey or not. The good news is that the state has recognized that there are factors other than standardized testing that matter. The bad news is that there's still a great deal of emphasis on grading and ranking and so on. So, for our schools, there are two of our schools were rated exemplary. Sheridan and our middle schools were rated commendable, and a couple of notes on that. And I would encourage the board and everybody else to take this with a great deal of salt. We have the final grade, but we do not know, at this time, how we wound up getting to that grade, and there's no rhyme or reason. So, I have learned over the course of this past weekend, I was at a conference and speaking with a number of my colleagues from Illinois, some of them think that they have figured out, they were able to back into how they think that some of their schools got this rating and other schools got that rating. There is no one sheet of paper like we would expect if we got a report card to hit print and say, "Okay, you scored 90 percent on this and 75 percent on that," and so on. There's not that. You actually have to back into the various components, and those components, again, are all of these. And so, it's a great deal of tea leaf reading at this time. One of the reasons, in particular, to take these things with a grain of salt is that the state has continuously, over many years, promised prompt feedback and meaningful feedback to schools, whether that meant standardized tests coming back or whatnot. That feedback is delayed, it's impartial, the assessments change continuously. So, Park, for example, is going away, and there's going to be a new assessment. And in many of your time on the board, Park was introduced, there were certain problems with it. The pencil version of it was, the students scored differently on a pencil version, and they did a computerized version, which tells you that there are problems with validity and reliability. And so, all of these things are also subject to political whims and political winds. Evidence of that is No Child Left Behind was an unmitigated disaster in virtually every way, as was Race to the Top. And that Race to the Top came and went. One of the examples on the arbitrariness of the college rankings, or the high school rankings, or the elementary school rankings, is that when our kids go to, when they graduate from high school, the state will tell you, or ACT will tell you, that 30 percent of them are ready for college, when in fact, 70 percent of them enroll in college, or are enrolled in college, and 46 percent of them actually wind up getting four-year degrees. Something, somewhere, is wrong with that. Also, the cut scores are very, very important. So, every time our students take a test, no matter what test it is, they take the Park test, they take the SAT, or whatever that test happens to be, there's a group of people that sit in the room, and they decide, "This is the score that is going to be the score for being called exceeding expectations." This is what expectations are, this is what approaching expectations are, and so on. And all of that is arbitrary. It is somebody sitting in a room and deciding how many children they want, what percentage of kids they want to be successful on this test. And it is not a scientific measurement by any stretch of the imagination. Likewise, one of the worst parts of No Child Left Behind, what they did, was they named schools, they blamed them, and then they shamed them publicly. And No Child Left Behind lost credibility when every single North Shore High School, for example, was a failing district. And that's when everybody knew, "Hey, there's something that is wrong with this." And this is a cycle of the fixation on standardized tests. The letter grades are also a belief that there must be a bell curve applied to everything. If we were to use the same philosophy with children, we would be accused, justifiably so, of educational malpractice. Just because somebody gets an A doesn't mean that somebody else must get an F, that everybody in a class can do well and the teacher can be successful, if that is the case. So, we don't have control over certain things, but we do have a lot of control over what we know and believe are the most important things in our kids' lives and for our students. So, for our students in District 67, we have said, and we have striven for, and we have accomplished this, we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum for every student. That means that every student gets the good stuff, and that every teacher has the realistic likelihood of being able to get through that curriculum. We've said that we want students to grow socially and emotionally and academically, that these things are all important to us, and we have put tremendous resources behind that, and we expect them to do all three. We want students to have highly differentiated inquiry-based instruction. We have brought in curricula without a ceiling and without a floor to ensure that everybody gets, A, the good stuff, and B, that they have the opportunity to grow. And we've invested a huge amount of time in reimagining our learning spaces, where time, tools, and technology are used inside and outside of the classroom. Those are things that are and do make a difference for our students, and that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments for the superintendent? We now move to our first public participation. If any member of the public wishes to address the board, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the board. Each person is limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. We ask that public comment not be redundant, and all comments be directed to the board and not to the audience. Public comments directed to the board are listened to and taken under advisement. While the board may ask clarifying questions, the board does not respond or necessarily answer questions posed to them. If the public has any written materials that may be handed to the board clerk for public record. Thank you. Is there any members of the public?
Good evening. I'm Lori Rose, Lake Forest resident. Five years ago, I was sitting where you sat. I spent eight years as a member of the District 67 Board of Education, four years as secretary, and prior to that, more years than I care to count as a practicing attorney. I'm here tonight in my official capacity as President of the League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff area. Two days ago, Dr. Ingrid Wymer from District 67 was one of our eminent guest speakers on a panel that we hosted on Gun Violence: Local Impact. This is what she said. "Despite affluence, Lake Forest and Lake Bluff residents need to be proactive about gun violence, as proactive as those in any other community. We want to make sure that we're not too complacent to think it couldn't happen here. We live in idyllic communities, we need to make sure we know mental illness does happen here, this danger could erupt in a school at any moment." I'm quoting from a Chicago Tribune article, which came out yesterday, which I'll leave a copy of with the board clerk. "My service on the District 67 Board of Education included attendance at annual conferences presented by the IASB, the Statewide Illinois Association of School Boards. The IASB drafts policy which often becomes legislation. I am here tonight to urge you to take appropriate action on the Student Safety Protection Resolution, which is currently pending before the IASB. This resolution, which will be voted upon at the annual IASB Conference in Chicago on November 17th, authorizes the IASB to advocate for new legislation which would allow trained teachers and administrators to carry a licensed firearm in school when students are present. The proposed resolution presents potential fatal consequences for students, teachers, administrators, and public safety personnel. The American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association oppose guns in schools and the arming of teachers. Law enforcement officers entering a building in an emergency might mistake an armed teacher for a school shooter. FBI-derived data from the Violence Policy Center demonstrates that only 20 percent of the shots fired by trained police officers hit the intended target. If arms are present in our schools, students, particularly those with emotional wellness issues, might find ways to access the weapons. Furthermore, police identification of school shooters is rendered more difficult when many individuals possess weapons. Just recently, an armed security guard was fatally wounded by a police officer. The League of Women Voters of Illinois has studied gun violence for many years. Our position is articulated in the material accompanying my statement. I have provided a copy to the board clerk, and I urge you to read it. Many school boards, notably Naperville Community Unit School District 203, have considered and opposed the Student Safety Protection Resolution in public Board of Education meetings. The League of Women Voters of Illinois and the League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff area urge you to follow their lead. Earlier today, I was advised that every member district of the IASB, not just the Lake County Division Representative, has the right to enter a single vote at the delegate assembly session on November 17th. Tonight, I'm asking you to convene via telephonic meeting prior to November 17th and vote as a board to oppose the IASB Student Safety Protection Resolution. The IASB is urging members to vote in favor of this resolution. Even if none of you attend the IASB Conference, a sense of the meeting resolution by Lake Forest School District 67 Board sends a powerful message to our community. I also invite you to view video coverage of our November 11th program entitled Gun Violence: Local Impact on our website at www.lwv-lflb.org. In addition to Dr. Wymer from Lake Forest School District 67, our distinguished panel of experts includes Dr. Colleen Caccetti from Lurie Children's Hospital, Roman Bookberger from the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and Sarah Knuznik from the Illinois Council Against Handgun Violence. Our gun violence event was also recently covered by Ed Redd. I will leave a copy of this statement, the Illinois League Position Regarding Gun Regulation, and a copy of the Chicago Tribune article with all board members and the clerk for insertion into the meeting minutes in the record. I'm requesting that the clerk deliver copies of the materials to the members and administrators present tonight. I'm grateful for the opportunity to address you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board? You were not here when we went through the procedure, so I'll go over it again. If any members of the public wish to address the board, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the board. Each person is limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. We ask that public comment not be redundant, and all comments be directed to the board. Public comments are directed to the board and are listened to and taken under advisement. While the board may ask clarifying questions, the board does not necessarily respond or answer to the questions that are posed to them. If the public has any written materials, they may be handed to the board clerk. Thank you.
Angela Schrumzer. I live at 677 Greenbrier Lane, Lake Forest.
Kelly Hoopis, 670 Greenbrier Lane, Lake Forest.
Not very prepared, but we come here as two parents from Sheridan School, and we currently have a lice situation. And the current lice policy that's in place is one that is creating a little bit of a havoc. We are not notified, and the children aren't checked, if there is lice in the class. So, if somebody goes home with lice, there isn't a note that goes out to the school that...
To the parents.
Or to the parents.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, that child goes home. So, then you're left with a classroom full of kids that may have lice. And I had that case with my family last May, had no idea that my child had lice. I wash her hair all the time, you know, every day. And only till I went to a cocktail hour with some moms, did after, you know, they after told me, "Hey, Angela, go check your daughter's hair, she had lice," and she had a strong case of it. So, we have about eight cases, just in second grade.
So, they have, so I think the bottom line to all of it is that the student, no one knows that the kids have it, and the parents aren't, like she said, the parents are not informed. They, well, I'm sorry, the parent of the child who has it may be informed, they're not required to take their child out of the school, and then the parents of the rest of the class is not informed to check their own children's heads. So, it seems to be happening. So, today, for example, our kids, their backpacks were put in black garbage bags at school. They're putting all their personal belongings in these garbage bags, they're removed from the classroom for 24 hours. So, the schools know that there's a problem. So, there's, and both of my kids, I have two kids at Sheridan right now, and one child at DPM, and we had lice a month and a half ago. I just spent another $200 having my kids' heads checked. I'm a single mom with three girls. I can't be, like, I can't get through all their hair on my own. And so, what's happening is, is we just don't know when these, like, when to look for the cases, so we can't protect our own kids and then prevent it from happening to other children. So, the current policy, we're just, and it's not just us, and we could get a petition or whatever you guys recommend for, God willing, this policy to change, but the current policy of just kind of protecting a child's potential, you know...
Exposure.
Yeah, just their, it's, we're just trying to make it so that parents have the right to, or just are notified, so we can look at our kids and then prevent other children from getting it. So, Sheridan is, they're very aware of this problem, and they're cleaning the school tonight, they're doing all they can, but if the kids come back to school tomorrow that have lice and their parents never checked them, Sheridan's going to deal with this again tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day. So, it's just a, the policy doesn't seem to be working, even though they're saying the CDC is, this is the recommended policy, or whatever. In my 41 years of life, it's never been an epidemic, so...
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our table.
Yes, thank you. No, you did a great job.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move to administrative reports. There are no administrative reports that I know of tonight. So, we move to board committee reports. First up, Board of Education chaired by Jeff Fulkerson.
The Board of Education Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is in December.
Questions or comments for the board, for the ed committee? Next up, the Board Finance and Ops chaired by Tom Ford.
On Wednesday, October 31st, the Finance and Ops Committee had a meeting scheduled at West Campus for 7:00 AM. Due to late changing circumstances, we were unable to form a quorum and thus had to cancel the meeting. We have not rescheduled this meeting.
Questions for the Finance and Operations Committee? We move to the Policy Committee chaired by Kent. Kent is unable to be with us tonight. Is there any member of the Policy Committee that wishes to give a report?
The committee has not met since our last meeting.
Well done. Any questions for the Policy Committee? Compensation Committee chaired by Rob Lemke.
Compensation has not met.
Questions for Rob? Joint Shared Services Committee also has not met. I will not take questions. Moving to Liaison Reports. NSSCD Suzanne.
NSSCD is meeting tomorrow night.
We look forward to hearing about it in December. Legislative Liaison, Tom.
I finally have a report, and basically, we now have a new governor, and though both candidates profess to put K through 12 education as a top priority, the way to fund this continues to be a question, and this is one that Governor-elect Pritzker now has to face. In August of 2017, I believe it was August 2017, the state passed the 2017 School Funding Bill, which was SB 1947. This put the state on a 10-year path to closing an estimated $6.8 billion funding gap statewide, where at the time, over 83 percent of the school districts, which is 713 of the 852, were funded below the adequacy targets that have been set in this overhaul by the state. On average, Illinois funds over 63 percent of its school budgets from local property taxes. So, the challenge of easing the property tax burden statewide while still adequately funding our schools is one the Governor-elect and the Senate and the House face. The Governor-elect has publicly stated that he'd ultimately like to get the school funding proportion ratio down in the state of Illinois closer to 50 percent property taxes and 50 percent other sources, and he's touted several ways to possibly have this occur. Top on the list that we've probably heard about the most is the, to work with legislature to install a new progressive income tax structure in the state, though the soonest this could happen would be in 2020. Other areas the Governor-elect has talked about on the campaign trail were things such as legalizing sports betting and recreational marijuana. All these things we'll hear about a lot more in the future, the upcoming months and years. Finally, though the November elections are now in the books, not all the drama is over. There are currently 18 school districts that, as part of an 11th-hour addition to the 2017 School Funding Bill, will be voting through referendums as to whether or not they can actually cut back on a portion of their property taxes related to educational funding under the above-mentioned law. School districts that have reached a minimum goal of having their funding level, their funding adequacy level of over 110 percent under this act can, through a signature petition, elect to put on a ballot a referendum to cut back the property taxes in relation to what goes on to funding their local schools. Though the amount of the tax bill can ultimately be reduced, and how much it is finally calculated is still murky due to the different interpretations of the act, we should have a much clearer idea on the true impact of this law this coming April, when 18 districts are voting. Also, in case if you were wondering where Lake Forest falls on this, both 67 and 115 qualify for this referendum under the 110 percent evidence-based funding formula, and we're at 161 under that formula, 161 percent. So, expect to hear a lot more about this after this coming April elections, and this can be done, these referendums can occur every other year. That concludes my November legislative report.
Thank you, Tom. Questions or comments for Tom? Spirit of 67 Suzanne.
Spirit of 67 Foundation Board met this morning, right over there, and their Thanks for Giving luncheon and Raise Your Hand for Education online auction results were shared. This year's events raised $86,000, up from $57,000 last year. The auction alone brought in $69,000, and actually, there are still a few things going on that are still bringing in more money right now, some buy-in parties that have not taken place yet. So, both events were very successful, in part due to the fact that many of the expenses were underwritten by sponsorships. Their donor update today was that donations are currently just over $121,000 as of October Family participation district-wide is just over 57 percent. And this year, they're running a little crosstown competition where any school that participates, who gets a participation rate of 80 percent or greater will earn a $1,000 Founder's Grant for their school in a celebration. Sheridan is currently at 77 percent, Cherokee is at 72 percent, Everett is at 61 percent, and DPM is at 56 percent. The superintendent also visited the meeting today. Mr. Simick spoke with the group about a recent reorganization announcement, and then he shared his gratitude for the role of the Spirit of 67 Foundation and the role that they play in the district. And in response to a request from them, he had suggested a few projects on the horizon that the Spirit could consider contributing to in an impactful way. And then, finally, they shared the date for the new spring event, this year in place of a home tour, which will now only happen every other year. The Spirit will be hosting an evening fundraising event on Friday, April 26th. More details will be shared in the weeks and months to come. The next Foundation Board meeting, or Spirit of 67 Foundation Board meeting is February 12th at 9:00 AM here on West Campus.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions regarding the Spirit of 67? Executive APT Jeff.
The Executive, APT Executive Board met last Wednesday here at the West Campus. Unfortunately, I was out of town and not able to attend and have not had a chance to see the minutes, so unfortunately, my apologies to the APT, I do not have a report tonight.
We will not ask you any questions then either. Any other liaison reports that I may have missed? Seeing none, we now come to our second public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to action items. First up, may I have a motion to approve the 2018 tentative levy?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions or discussion on the 2018 levy?
Was the levy discussed at Finance and Ops after I left?
We didn't have a meeting.
We did have a meeting like last week, or the week before. I left at 8:00 AM. And we had a discussion, that's correct. Was there a discussion that morning?
We had the materials in the packet, and we discussed the components of the levy as part of the five-year process. I believe the exact memo that the board has in its packet was included in the Finance and Ops packet.
Did the community members talk at all? Anybody from the community sitting at that discussion?
I don't know. I don't remember.
Other comments, questions, discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
No.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Deputy Superintendent 2019 through 2022 contract contingent on... Sorry, I'll use my microphone this time. May I have a motion to approve the Deputy Superintendent 2019 through 2022 contract contingent on approval of the 2019 through 2022 Enabling Agreement by the Lake Forest High School District 115, as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Just for the public, that contract was for Rebecca Jenkins.
Wait a minute.
No, it wasn't. Maybe I should stick to the script better. That was not for Rebecca. Ignore that.
It was, too. That was Deputy Superintendent. Yes, it was.
Oh.
He was messing with me.
Man, you guys are screwing with me. And you're screwing with Rebecca as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As previously stated, that contract was for Rebecca Jenkins. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Director of Teaching and Learning one-year contract for Jeff McHugh?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Executive Director of Student Services one-year contract for Kate Kavanaugh?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the Human Resources items? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the Consent Agenda. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member. The Consent Agenda tonight includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements dated October 2018, adoption of a resolution authorizing Jennifer Hermes as trustee of the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund, minutes of irregular meeting and workshop October 23rd, 2018, minutes of an executive session, October 23rd, 2018, minutes of board workshop, October 29th, 2018, disposal of audio recordings, March 21st, 2017. Does any board member wish to have any item removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote.
Hang on a second.
Sorry, go ahead.
What is the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund? And why do we need to have an authorization, authorizing you to be a trustee? Are we, do we oversee that or something? I'm not quite clear what that is.
You do not, but I was an appointed trustee to that. It meets quarterly. We do participate in the pool, and it's a joint, kind of an investment pool, where municipalities and school districts can pool their money to get greater returns on their investments. So there is an overseeing body represented by three members from Illinois ASBO, three members from AAASA, and three members from Illinois School Board Association. So those three entities are together in this pool. I've actually sat on the committee for over a year, but now they're cleaning up all their I's and T's, and so they would like a board resolution acknowledging that I'm an appointed trustee.
So the fund is asking local boards to...
For the trustees. Well, and board members, there's three board members as well from other districts throughout the state, but...
That's great, and I have no trouble with this. I'm just curious, what are we authorizing with the, is this just a nice-to-have to show that we support you being on the board?
It's acknowledging that you're aware that I sit on this investment pool as a trustee.
And this... I'm just, the word "authorizing" made me wonder if I'm supposed, if we're supposed to, we have power over something, I didn't realize we had.
Yeah, the actual participants in the pool actually do a vote. So that's how you become on it to start with. So they put up recommended candidates, and then every district that participates, or municipality that participates in the pool actually does get a vote, in usually two-year or three-year terms. So you're actually voted in by the participants, but this is an acknowledgement of that.
And this liquid asset fund is one of a limited number of investment vehicles that school districts have. Is that correct?
Well, what the fund does is, the fund actually goes out and secures bids on, you know, CDs and other investment vehicles that school districts are allowed to participate in. And so they have a wider network than I would have individually as a school district, because they're reaching out to all kinds of banks. They're going out in the market, and they've already vetted them in doing things of that nature.
But our authorization is just to say, it's okay with us that you do this outside of yours, like, as a part of your time.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please, and the Consent Agenda.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. FOIA requests? There are no FOIA requests this month. Announcements, November 21st through November 23rd, 2018 is Thanksgiving break. Tuesday, November 27th, 2018, elementary combined chorus caroling, Market Square, 5 to 6:00 PM. Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, is our next Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM, right here in the West Campus boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District 67 Board meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.